Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this candidate forum for the Cupertino Union School District. I am Maria Shovlin. And I am from the League of Women Voters. I will be moderating this candidate forum. Today's session is a Zoom webinar. And because it is, all attendees are in listen-only mode and only our panelists will be on video. Any technical questions? Or problems, just send an email to techsupport@lwvc.org. This session is being recorded. And a link to the recording will be available on l w v c s dot org in the next few days. Before we get to the core of the forum, I'd like to share some information about the League of Women Voters. And I'll do a little voting commercial. The League has been host this forum to allow voters to see the candidates and hear them address questions of interest to the public. Our goal is to enable voters to learn about the candidates so that they can make informed choices. The League of Women Voters never endorses or opposes a candidate or a political party. The League has been empowering voters and defending democracy for over 100 years. We have two distinct functions. Done separately through two different corporations. One that does voter education, which of which today's event is an example. The other, which after extensive study, we take positions on issues and then as appropriate, advocate for the passage of laws. Now, a word about the November election. When you get your ballot, which you probably have already received, pay attention to how they list your name. Is it first and last, or is it first, middle, and last name? Sign your name on your ballot in the same way that is on the ballot. Because when voter California passed the Voters' Choice Act, you have several actions on how to cast your vote and deliver your ballot by mail. But please mail early by ballot drop box. Or you can deliver your ballot to a voter center. Now, where do you find a voter center? You may, the, it's very simple. The good news is that you can go to the URL shown here or capture the QR code. Go to the site, enter your address, and then drop off your drop-off locations will and vote centers will be listed. And we always recommend that you check your voter registration status. It's also very easy to do and can be done online. Use the QR code listed here or capture or the URL. And enter your name, California driver's license, or California ID card number, and the last four numbers of your social security and your birthday. If you get retry, you should probably re-register. Now, when you get your ballot, may be challenged. But we have some good news. The Voters Edge site is a joint project of MAP White and the League of Women Voters of California. Voters Edge of California is a comprehensive, nonpartisan guide to elections, covering the federal, state, and local races in the state of California and the state and local ballot measures. And it also includes campaign finance information, where the money's coming from. This is a lot of people's go-to resources when they're completing their ballot. Okay, now let's get to the good part. We have four candidates for three Cupertino Union School Board seats, each with a four-year term. On the screen, you can see the candidates' names and faces. And you can get more information about each candidate via votersedge.org and looking at their website. The questions for this forum were developed by a team of League members as well as questions submitted via email prior to the cat, this idea. We got a lot of questions from the public. And since we've received ample questions, we are not collecting more questions from the audience tonight. The candidates have agreed to the format and ground rules for this forum. I will pose questions which were gathered in advance. Each question has a designated response time of 90 seconds or 60 seconds. A timer will be visible in a separate box labeled timer and will give candidates visual signals to help them pace their responses and stop on time. Each candidate should be responsive to the questions they are asked, civil in their responses, and may not interrupt another candidate or the moderator. And may not make any remarks that are personal in nature or directed at any specific individual. And they are all to be in English. If the candidate violates ground rules more than twice, the candidate will be removed from the forum. Each candidate also has two 30-second rebuttal opportunities that they may use to rebut remarks from any of the other candidates. They may not use the rebuttal time to just add their own comments or go off topic. At this time, I'm asking all the candidates to unmute and to turn on their videos. All right, look at all those gorgeous faces. And now I want to extend my welcome to Ava. Satish.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Very. Darcy. The speaking order for the questions was randomly drawn, and it will shift with each question. So for the first question, the speaking order will be Jerry, Satish, Darcy, and Ava. Candidates were given the first and last questions prior to the forum. The first question for which you all have 90 seconds to respond is, what qualifies you for being a trustee on the Cupertino Union School Board? And we will start with Jerry.
All right, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for providing this opportunity for us to be here today. My name is Jerry Lo, and I'm running for reelection for the CUSD School Board. My qualifications for the board can be summarized into one word: experience. First, I have experience with our schools. I'm a father of two daughters who have spent over a decade in CUSD schools. And I was an active volunteer in the district for many years prior to joining the board. I've helped in the classrooms and organized fundraisers. I've chaired school site councils, and I've served as a PTA president. I know what our community needs from our schools. Second, I have professional management experience. In my day job, I run a software engineering organization that spans across four continents with different and multiple management levels. I know the pitfalls and the tips in aligning an organization to get things done. Third, I have experience governing our school district. Ever since I've joined the board, I've spent literally hundreds of hours in public board meetings, pulling over reports, and talking to people. I know how our district works. And this is particularly important as we transition out of the pandemic and as we move into a new funding model in the coming years. I believe that a strong education together with hard work and a little luck is the key to the American dream. Because I've lived in myself, and I want to give this gift to our next generation. Thank you.
And our next speaker will be Satish.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, League. Actually, thanks for, thanks all of you for coming for this forum. My name is Satish Madhul, and I was elected in 2018 to the board, and I'm the current board president. I have, I've been closely associated with CUSD and the community last 17 years. And out of that, like first 13 years, mainly in the schools, community, and mainly in the school parent, you know, organizations like PTA. I was the, you know, the PTA president of my elementary school, middle school, and the high, sorry, middle school vice president and the high school PTA president. I was part of the PTA council. I was part of the six district PTA as well. So I have two kids who graduated from CUSD. And professionally, I'm an engineering leader, worked in, you know, Silicon Valley companies last over two decades. So my passion has been always on education, students, and youth. In addition to my this volunteer, you know, volunteering, you know, experience, I'm part of two couple of other nonprofit organizations as well. So my platform has been always on education, always on students, always on youth and their welfare. Thank you very much.
And next is Darcy Paul.
Hi, everyone. I'm Darcy Paul, and thank you to League of Women Voters of Cupertino-Sanibel for hosting this forum. Well, I look at it from three viewpoints. I think perspective, experience, and qualifications. If I'm elected to the Cupertino Union School District Board, then I will be the only parent of kids that are in the school district at that time. And so I think the perspective is very important. For example, I just went to a PTA conference, I should say, a parent-teacher conference earlier this week. And I was hearing my fifth grader have some updates with respect to her socio-emotional learning. I think it's really important to have that perspective on the board for people that are experiencing what's going on in the district at the time. Second experience, I am almost done with eight years on the city council. I'm in the middle of my third year as mayor, and I think that that experience is going to serve invaluable as a person that has been through a lot of various of the more difficult issues. And then with regard to the qualifications, you know, what I've learned over time is that the most important thing that you can bring to the table is your thinking. And of course, your ability and willingness to listen and take those together. I'm a graduate of Harvard College. I was pre-med there, but I decided to go to law school. And so I also went to Harvard Law School and just decided to dedicate a lot of my time to civics. And so I think the qualifications are there as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Ava.
Hi, everyone. I want to first thank League of Women Voters for having this forum. What makes me qualified is I've been a teacher, and this is my 19th year teaching. With the experience of working with students in the classroom, this is what I bring to the board that is very unique. With the changes, there are changes in society, and we must evolve and adapt to them. The pandemic has upended public education. And during the pandemic, when it first started, I was one of those teachers that transitioned from in the classroom to online teaching. And also, when we come back to school, teaching the students. I have classroom experience in curriculum. I have my teaching credentials to teach bilingual Spanish and science, preschool, and elementary credentials. With curriculum, I have experienced developing curriculum for elementary, special education, bilingual education, and preschool child development. Leadership skills mentoring teachers in professional development, knowing that teachers are future teachers, student teachers, so that you become teachers themselves. Leadership at the district level, leading advisory committees and grant coordinators. I have a heart for students and for the next generation, and I hope to bring the current missing perspective of a working teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to some root, more root, regular questions. The first one is, how can communications be improved between the district and the communities it served? And we'll start that one with Satish. And each of these questions has a response time of 60 seconds.
Oh, thank you. I think communication plays a major role. Actually, that is the way for us to be, you know, connecting with the community and the parents. And, you know, there are different ways of communication, again, like, you know, the traditional way of sending mails. Okay, or putting in the website and so on. But I think that is probably just by, you know, just we are sending it, but that probably may not be good enough. We need to make sure that we have, it is reaching to the right people with the right information, and they are heard in the right way. So we should be in a position to, I think, use better tools and constant communication and make sure that it's reaching with them. And same way, you know, you can call them, you know, whether you received it or not. In addition to that, we can have office hours, we can have town hall meetings, coffee with principals, coffee with the superintendent, or coffee with the board members, and so on. I think the, you know, that are, you know, we should export any, any possible tools to make the communication smoother. Thank you.
Thank you. How about you, Darcy?
Thanks, Maria. I appreciate it. So this is a core component of my candidacy. I want to make sure that we are communicating properly with the constituency. And the prime example I see is, you know, we were going through a really difficult time last couple of years with the pandemic. And, you know, a lot of times when it really comes down to those exigent circumstances, you really get a core sense of of those positionings. And I think that the care and compassion, if it's evinced, then what we're going to see is a lot more support from the constituency for the district when it comes to things like, you know, kind of financial efforts. And so I think that most critically, we have to show people that we really care and are concerned about their well-being and their welfare. And it's absolutely true that everyone has perspectives, but it's also really true that we're a service industry, and we need to think about those parents and students. Thanks.
Thank you. Ava.
Hi there. So communication, we are public service entities to our constituents, and that's really important. So I've been door knocking a lot and a lot of communication. Communication has been mentioned by the voters, and they want to hear what's going on in classrooms. Why is that? Because during the pandemic, the classrooms were brought to the homes. The parents got to see and experience what was it like on a daily basis, what's going on in classrooms. And so now that we're back in the classrooms and no longer into the living rooms of our homes, the parents want to hear more from the teachers, what's going on within the classroom, so if we can help provide support, maybe start a conversation with their child, how their day was going, knowing what was going to be taught. So maybe asking more of the teachers, reaching out to the parents, just to give them a summary of what's going on, maybe what's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jerry?
Yes, I would summarize it as what I would call the three Cs: channel, content, and carrier. So let me start with the first. Is there, different people have different preferences for receiving information. Some like phones, some like computers, someone like to get it, get it through social media, someone like to get it through email. So I think it's important for us to get data on how people like to get communication from the district, and we deliver it in a manner that they prefer. The second is around content. So there's a thing that's called by Mark Twain that said, "I didn't have time to write you a short letter, so I wrote you a long one." Sometimes when you increase communication, you send out more content, it actually decreases the communication. I think it's important for us to be specific when we send communication out that it's relevant and people, it's something people want to know. The third thing is that what I've found is people pay more attention to communication coming from the school than the district. They pay more attention to things that come from the classroom than the, than the, than the schools. And so we want to, you know, have teachers help us with the communications. Thank you.
And the next question is, what are you most proud of about the CUSD district? What are you most proud of? And let's start that one with Darcy.
Yeah, you know, I stipulate the CUSD district is generally doing a fantastic job. You know, if I were to give it a grade, it would be around the A-minus area. You know, I think that's, that's a really good starting grade. You know, I think that the public schools are a wonderful part of the American educational system, and I'm 100% supporter of them. Although I went to private schools for my college and graduate school, I'm a product of public school education, K through 12. My dad was a math teacher, you know, for 20 years in a public high school. And I really think that the mission is very important. With regard to our public schools for CUSD, I think that we have wonderful programs, the alternate programs. The alternative programs are ones that, you know, my family partakes of, we're in the, you know, the Cupertino Language Immersion Program. I think a lot of things are really going great in CUSD, frankly. And, you know, frankly, I'm very grateful for this. Thanks.
How about you, Ava?
Yes, I'm uniting myself. All right. Definitely academics and the holistic approach in which we have in CUSD. This is the reason why my family moved here more than 25 years ago is for the academics, and we are still going strong. At the last school, well, the last second to last school board meeting that I went to for CUSD, it looks like from the test scores from last year is that most of our students are doing well, and they've been improving. And we need to have that commitment and keep on going of the high academics and the holistic wellness programs that we have for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and how about you, Jerry?
For me, it's definitely student success. Our district has had a reputation for academic achievement. And, you know, during this, this whole episode of the pandemic, if you look at the CAPS scores, we've actually almost recovered from pre-pandemic levels, which is something that I think as far exceeds what we're seeing through the state. I'm proud that we put in the mechanisms for data collection so that in a more granular level than sort of once a year achievement test score. So we have things like iReady where literally a principal could see the results, you know, within a day when the students take them. And that allows us to really tailor instruction to the students. It allows us to do data-driven planning in the way that we educate our students. And so, and it's not just the academics, and it's really also the holistic, you know, our emphasis on the whole child around some of the character traits, how to, some of the social emotional learning. Thank you.
And Satish?
I think as everybody said, excellent education. I think that's why even I myself moved into Cupertino when my, you know, first job was about to be born, right? So excellent education is the one which I can really take pride on that. Then the choices, various choices available, right? And elective is what we offer to kids and for in the elementary and middle schools, right? Then again, personalized learning in their own pace or what support kind of, and, you know, interventions and everything. This all supports for student success, right? I think all the things are well-integrated in the system. And another thing is we have a very good strategy, we, you know, strategy of the plans and things like that, and goals are set very clearly. And we have actions on each of that, and that makes us to achieve these goals. And, you know, data and the two data-driven and the tools, the implementation of multiple tools, whether for communication or to measure, it's been in place already. I'm so proud of that. Thank you.
Next question. Relevant to some of the conditions that we've seen during the past couple of years. How would you address the mental health needs in CUSD students and teachers? And let's start with Ava.
Mental health is something that in the first year when we came back in the classroom, there was a huge need for students and adjustment. It's not normal for us human beings to be quarantined at home and not be social. Definitely not normal to be learning through online, on video. So that human interaction was much needed. There was adjustments for our students. And there's still adjustments this year, even the second year after the pandemic, that the students need adjustments in getting used to socializing, more interactions with each other. And I would say that we need to have more social workers for our middle school students where they can drop in and have group talks. And also, this, if we can provide this for our students, they will have a bigger sense of belonging and knowing that people care about them so that they can thrive academically. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
A lot of learning actually happens at school outside of the core academics. If you think about what happens, a child comes, a student comes to school, they learn about following directions. They learn about interacting with other students. They learn about working in a group and identifying their feelings. And there's a lot of social emotional learning that happens when they're in school. And so what happened in the pandemic was that was all taken away. And so now that we're back, it's important for us to provide additional resources, which states have given us funding for. Both in terms of providing more learning opportunities in terms of intervention classes, but then also providing support for activities where they can get together and learn the sort of the how to work together, communication, et cetera. In terms of staff, what's happened with our staff is they've had to make, do a lot of work, you know, going the distance, learning, coming back. It's a lot of workload, and I think we need to find ways to balance their workload a little bit better than the time that they have right now. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Satish?
Yeah, it's very important to have an infrastructure for that, right? Like our infrastructure should be constantly looking into the mental health of kids. It's not just the academics, right? So we need to have the ways and means to support, you know, have that infrastructure, that is by having the right number of counselors or supporting staff on that. And over and double, I think we, we need to see that is there a way for us to get the feedback, like how they are doing it, constantly can we monitor them and how they are doing. And maybe even we should be engaging the parents as well. In this case, it's district alone cannot work on that. We need to have a good partnership with the parents as well. So jointly, we should be able to support such a requirement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next question.
I didn't go on that one.
Oh, I'm. Okay.
Just on my one.
I'm sorry. Yes, Darcy, sorry.
Okay, no worries. So a couple of things. You know, I trust professionals, I trust the experts. I am grateful for the fact that the state is putting a lot of resources into this. There's a lot of attention being paid to it. One of the things I've heard over time, however, though, when you have these facilities in schools, a lot of the kids, they don't necessarily partake of them because there might be, you know, some, you know, some, some reticence to go in and be seen. So one of the things that we did as a city was we had an event, right, a fun event that kind of connected it with the community. We gave people both the, you know, teens boba and had a lot of various tables with the different organizations and mental health outreach support. I also see this as, it was called Boba Tina, by the way, but I also see this as a continuum of work that I'm doing as a council member and mayor here. Right now, there's a push by our supervisor, Joe Semidian, to go ahead and build mental health supportive facilities in the West Valley because we don't have any through the county. So that kind of work needs to be supported as well. Thanks.
Our next question is what specific strategies can be used to engage all stakeholders to support the CUSD strategic plan? And let's start that one with Jerry.
All right, thank you. I think to get people to support the strategic plan, the very first step is to explain to people what it is. And what that is, it's a philosophy that guides our education. It's about what we call relevant and rigorous instruction, you know, focusing on the fundamentals and of learning. There is a personalizing instruction where we tailor instructions to the needs of the individual learner. And then the third is the whole child. It's not just about academics. It's about a lot of the life skills and citizenship. I think the best way to get support for this, because this is very high level, and there's a lot of thought that's put into it. So I would have two thoughts here. One is to have this be communicated to the community again through the teachers. You know, they need to bind to this, the folks that sort of interact with the students. And the number two, to come up with very specific examples of what does all this mean? For instance, personalized instruction. What that means is we use iReady to see where the kids are, so they get content that's at their level. Thank you.
And Satish? Satish, please unmute, unmute yourself.
Sorry about it. I was talking. Yeah, I think communication, again, communication. I think. I think you know, I will emphasize more, more and more on the communication. That's a way for us to be engaging, you know, the the community and the parent group. So we should find ways and means for them to understand what the, you know, what our strategic uh plans are. And how they can help us out. We make them part of us, right? It's not just the, it's it's not just district given, it's it's a community and the district. Collaborate, legally, we should be looking into that. Make them understand the thing, take their input, take their feedback as well. And come up with, you know, I I I'll come up with some plans around that on how to implement. So I think if you can take into confidence from the community. If they understand, I'm very sure we can get a good help from them and jointly we should be able to achieve that. Thank you.
And Darcy.
Yeah, you know, I I think communication is such a core part of uh the entirety of what we need to be doing and improving. Um now, in in this strategic plan is obviously a really important component of how we're approaching the education of of our kids. And so my my approach is really. Get out into the community, wherever you have that opportunity, get out of the community, more uh more tabling, more fairs. Uh carnivals, you know, these types of um, you know, spaces are not lacking in the school district. And the thing is, when you activate those spaces within the neighborhoods, you can rotate these among the schools. Uh have, you know, good events, you know, share food, you know, uh the these types of things. Activate a community and and they garner support. So whether it's a strategic plan or whether it's, you know, litter pickup like I've been doing in my campaign. Um, you know, it's 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 building the civics and building the knowledge within the base of constituency and building that support. Thanks.
Thank you. Ava.
The strategic plan is basically how is the district going to implement their vision? And this is thinking into the future, making sure that our next generation gets the best education and even maybe even better education than we are. Doing now. And part of this engagement, bringing the community together. Recently, I've been going to a lot of fall events in C U S D and it was great seeing. Not only the current students, but past students coming back and volunteering for the fall events and. To keep that going, we need to bring the community more together, having events, maybe like a. C U S D wide science fair. Being a science teacher, I've put together science competitions before and even as a judge. Uh for science fairs. So this is a great opportunity, not only bringing academics, but the community together. And having science competitions, having past C O S D students and the parents and even community members. Being involved in uh the science fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is, what is your perception of the digital divide? And economic equity for C U S D students? And let's start with Satish.
So I I think um, you know, this is, this is very, very important, right? We need to have an equality actually in this opportunity perspective, right? And especially with just after this pandemic and we have learned quite a lot of things like, you know. How did, how import, how digital or how electronics, how a computer or our telephone is going to be more critical for our, you know. Um to uh 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 our kind of environment, right? So I think district should be, you know, what we should do is this should be in a position to be keep looking into the options for it to be expanding and reaching to everybody. It is not just the hardware, the software, even security on that. And you know, accessibility for all, uh everybody for this. So I think um. We need to have a constant, you know, focus on that and to make sure that this is uh. You know, it has been distributed or equitable across for every uh child or every student. Thank you.
And Darcy.
Yeah, okay. So digital divide, you know, you've got a couple of uh i- issues looking at here. You know, you're talking about access to technology ultimately at the end of the day. Can uh you have an even amount and fair amount of access to the technology? In C U S D, I don't see that as much of our issue. I I think it's more of an issue of whether we are. Providing the access to the technology in a way that's healthy for the kids. And that is something that. Was at the very beginning of, you know, when we first rolled out the iPads or these questions about whether, you know, the the kids should be. You know, using them and these are questions that every family goes through. It it's a matter of like, when do I give my kid, my my child a smartphone, right? Um but one thing, you know, when you're talking about economic equity, um we do have, you know, in Cupertino, you know, Apple and you you. You can do good and do well. You know, if you drive down the prices of your base model, you can actually get a lot of revenues. So if you really think about it from that perspective, a lot of these economic equity and digital divide questions can be answered by doing the right things. Thanks.
Okay, and Ava.
So digital divide is basically if you have not only the internet but the technology or you don't. And that's what's dividing students. Um internet these days, it's essential in almost every household and we saw that. With the pandemic, when we switched from in-class learning to online learning, it really showed that how valuable the internet is. The internet is actually almost like a gatekeeper of information. So providing internet not just for our students but the for the families in the community as well. How can we as a district work with the six cities in which we are in? And with their city uh with their cities into providing our community uh if not affordable, but maybe. A concept of free internet. Because having that free internet. It levels the praving field and that even the parents and the community members, they have more knowledge, which means they have more ability to help our students. Thanks.
Thank you. And Jerry.
All right. So digital divide to me is really the inequity in um being able to use technology as a tool for learning. Um so I look at this, there are really three parts here. The hardware, the devices, the software, which is the program you run. And then the know-how to actually make use of this. I think in our district, we do a very good job in terms of the hardware devices. We own um eleven thousand uh more or less iPads, we own a couple of thousand Chromebooks. We make these available uh for the kids to take home and all this. We've also at times made up available access to bandwidth. So I think we do get there. Software, I think this is where we have some standardized software around um the district, but there are also cases where. Uh the different teachers or the different schools tend to sort of uh maybe have their own best practices. The more we can share that, the better. I think we're, we want to put attention on this, it's in the know-how. Um basically, uh we have very good sits, uh site uh instruction technology folks that to. Provide support and I think we want to extend that support, not just for the uh at school but also at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is what, excuse me. What do you see as the priority issues to address as a school board member? What do you see as a priority issues to address as a school board member? Darcy.
Okay, great. Thanks, man. Um, so first of all, I I I put on my platform, I don't. Want to see anymore school closures, you know, for the near-term future. And so, you know, I put that first and foremost because the fact that. You know, the closures really affected a lot of uh parents and families throughout the district. Um I've, you know, literally in every single one of the cities, uh the six cities of of the district, people have come to me and said, look, you know, this was something that was. Uh very difficult to go through and let's make sure that we have that stabilization. So so that's why, you know, I I really put a focus on that, but in terms of. The overall prioritization of efforts, of course, we we want to be able to maintain and enhance the quality of education. So with regard to being able to do that, the resources as well, once we build that trust again with the parents. It are are something that we need to build back up and and that's why communication is so important. To be able to reach out to not just the the parents and the and students, but the entire constituency to rebuild that trust across the board. Thanks.
All right, and Ava.
Hey, priorities. Priorities, I'm gonna be students for me, always gonna be number one, that's my best interest and that we want to make sure that our students. Are gonna be academically successful, but in order for that to happen, we're gonna make sure that. They're being nurtured and that they're being taught nutrient skills in the schools and their support emotionally. Once they feel safe. The students will be able to do very well academically. Second is um making sure that our data and our finances are transparent. It's our responsibility to be uh free financially sustainable so that. Our next generation of students will continue uh to be in our school district and get great education. Um and then while we do that, make sure we inform and engage our uh parents and community. And then making sure that we stay on top of things, uh teaching our kids the best that we can. And that we're proud and confident of our school district, the schools and our students.
Thank you. And Jerry.
Right. For me, it's about managing the changes that are coming and there are three of them I like to talk about. The first around the recovery from the pandemic. Um even though we've done well academically, not all of our demographic groups have reached a pre um. Pre-pandemic levels of CAPS scores for in terms of academic achievement. We also are seeing a lot of cases where. Um the 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 students are needing a more intervention and things around um social emotional. So that's one. Area is around managing that change, the recovering from uh the pandemic. The second is the change that's coming in our funding model. We're going from what used to be L C F F, where we get paid. Uh per child and that's on a sort of a declining slope to one where um our revenue is going to come from based on property tax, which is slow uh upward going. And so we're going to be going from a a mindset where we're trying to survive before to one that we're trying to thrive. And thinking about how we make the investments. The third is around the declining enrollment, the uneven rate of declining enrollment in the different parts of the district. And how do we uh balance that? So we don't have overcrowded schools and schools that are uh small, right? Thank you.
Thank you. And Satish.
Yeah, one of the priorities of school today is the stakeholder engagement, right? I think it's very important to have a a yeah a good collaboration between our stakeholders, especially the community with the school and the school board. You know, for or the school district for it to be successful. I think this is one area which definitely which we need to be looking at into that and we need to have a full confidence built around everybody. And only with a strong partnership, we can do many of our, you know, any activities or even if a a fundraising or a jointly a problem if you want to solve. It would be, it would be the best way is to get their, you know, support. So my, from my point, it's very important to have a collaboration, you know, made or, you know, the partnership built. With the community, with the right stakeholders and the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is who do you identify? As C U S D stakeholders? And how do you see your responsibility to re- represent them all? And let's start that one with Ava.
Well, the stakeholders, uh number one should be the students, the parents, the other. Uh employees of the school, so all the staff members of the school and the community, may it be a business member, may it be a former C O S D parent. Maybe just a community member who lives here. Um so the stakeholders are inclusive of everybody who. Interacts and are within uh the C U S D district lines. And our responsibility as a public uh voted in public figure is to communicate with them. And I believe that looks like office hours, that means going to school events, that means going to community events. And listening, listening to what they have to say, what, what are some of their concerns and seeing if if it is a a. A concern and communicating that conversation and be able to put those topics uh and discuss it as a board. To help find solutions, to have committees that the community uh has input as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And what are your comments on that, Jerry?
Uh for me, this, the key stakeholder group is definitely the students and the parents. This is why the school district exists, right? And so the board um represents them by hearing their voices, by taking action based on their inputs. Uh so a lot of things that we do, we approve curriculum, we monitor uh student performance results. And so this is a key part of what we do. Another um important stakeholder group are the staff, the teachers and the staff of the district. And the the best way we support them again is also to hear their voices um to provide them what they need. We pay them um competitive salaries, we give them. Um, you know, listening, giving the tools and giving them the time to be able to do what we ask them to do. And then I think there's also another stakeholder group, then it's really the community, the taxpayers of the district who pay taxes to maintain. Um to run the school district. And so again, um we uh the way we uh listen to them. Uh we have um interact with them through office hours, through communications. And really um take action again based on their inputs. Thank you.
And Satish.
I think um it's no person in that like students, parents, uh the the teachers, staff, you know, teaching staff, administrators, okay? And the community members, okay. I think it's it's very, I think in my previous uh, you know, question, I explained this, like, it's very important to, you know. Get all these things, what is their need exactly? We should understand, we should, we need their, you know, uh partnership here. And that is the way which, you know, that is what I think as a board we should be looking into. And that's what as a district we should be looking to. Make sure that all the stakeholders are engaged well, okay? The and you know, especially like we said, that student, right? Students like, what is the student need? What is that we need to be looking into? Every prioritization should be based on students, keeping the students as first. And that's where we should be able to add a lot of value. Thank you.
And Darcy.
Uh, one thing I realized a a number of years ago, um as I was sitting on the dais in Cupertino Community Hall was that. The primary people to whom an elected official is beholden to are the voters. Uh they're the constituents. And at the end of the day, uh yes, you do have a number of stakeholders in any given one of these jurisdictions jurisdictions. But for me, um being able to focus the lens upon who I'm answerable to. As uh the people that put me into office, because this is a representative uh form of governance. Uh that really helped to clarify a lot of things. And so with regard to uh the mission and the purpose of the district, yes, absolutely. Uh students and the educational experience uh first and foremost. But with regard to being able to answer uh to a a group of people, you answer to your constituents. And so. Um, you know, every everyone else I see as um forming an orbit around uh that particular, you know, set of stakeholders, so to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. And next, how would you describe the role of a C U S D board member? And let's start with Jerry on that one.
Sure. Uh the role the 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 C U S D board is really to run our schools and provide education to the students. Um in a way that's consistent with the California Education Code and in um alignment with community priorities and values. Uh that I see as the main responsibility. And there are basically uh four actions, four categories of actions we take to make that happen. The first is about setting a long-term direction and vision for the district. And we do this by developing things like the strategic plan that shows everyone where we're going. The second is by establishing a structure. We hire the superintendent, we pass the right board policies and set up the structure of how the staff works. Number three then is providing support within that structure. What that means is passing a budget consistent with our policies. Making decisions consistent with the policies and then really explaining and representing to the public why we do the things we do. And the number four and closing the loop is basically um assessing performance. And we do this. Uh by having annual uh superintendent um evaluations, award evaluations. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Satish.
Yeah, it's exactly, I think, setting up the goal and the vision for the district. That's very important. Okay, that's a primary, 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 you know, responsibility of a board member. And you know, then after that, like, you know, the anything policy-related stuff, you should be reviewing the existing policy, making the rights modification. And make sure it is, you know, implemented through, yeah, the superintendent. So your contact person is superintendent. Actually, you can help to direct, you can help to, you know, you you create divisions and the policies. But the person who would be doing this is the superintendent and the staff. So work with them to make sure that this is happening. And constantly have a more, you know, check and the monitoring of it, how it is being happening. And look into from the other angle and see that it's it's all your vision is coming in place, you know, without any issues. Thank you.
And Darcy.
Yeah, um so so I I I like to keep things fairly straightforward um and and simplified if I possibly can. With regard to um kind of taking the years of experience that I've had as um, you know, elected official, public agency. What I see um as uh in in this system, our most primary function is essentially to evaluate. And uh hire the the primary employee. So here, it's the superintendent. And you know, I I look at it through the lens of how is the um, how is the district performing, right? Because ultimately, we're here, you know, on on that secondary le- level to provide oversight and accountability on behalf of the public and the voters and constituency. Now, there is a lot of other stuff, right? There and and we're expected to do it. Um, you know, the board president seems to have, you know, a bit of a different role and those expectations are taken up. But the core functions are the hiring of the primary employee and providing oversight and accountability uh for the public. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ava?
Okay, so role of board member, uh, it's wonderful to be a board member. Now, we are elected to the, to the position. However, we interact with constituents who are also non-voters. We have a lot of immigrants, um, who are also non-voters. So as a teacher, foremost, it's about caring for the students. Students have been my focus for the past nineteen years. And now I get to activate, uh, advocate for them at the board level. Um, and it's also about being community leader, bringing the voice of the community to the boardroom. Ensure that their district is accountable and providing oversight to finances and operations. I would work with the board colleagues together to help set the direction in the vision of our district moving forward. And provides support and effective um, system for teaching and learning. I'm looking forward to working with the school superintendent and the fellow board members in creating policy to help shape our education system. And make it continue being excellent. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, how do you think the district can close the achievement gap? And let's start that one with Satish.
I think um, uh, the main thing what we should be looking into the resourcing. I think we need to have the right, first of all, identify where the real gap is and how we can, you know, how we can support that. So find out the what, what is the resource requirement? Are we adequately funded for that? Do we have the right infrastructure around it? I think we need to have a clarity on that problem. And we need to recruit the right people around. We need to fill the gap wherever needed and create a supporting infrastructure for that. And as a board, I think what we can do is the right funding and right prioritization around that should be given. I think and constantly we should be looking into how the, is the gap going to be, you know, is it being reduced? How is it being worked right now? Is this good enough or not? So we need to have a feedback mechanism also to make sure that whatever you're trying to do is, you know, successful. Or do you need to find something more?
Okay. And Darcy?
Yeah, part of the achievement gap, and I think a really critical part of it is the socioeconomic part of the equation. And so I think, you know, resources need to be put into getting the appropriate personnel. Um, when you have a situation where um, a student needs to be homeschooled, for instance, you hire the appropriate personnel. Make sure that homeschooling uh, takes place. I think if you have achievement gap issues identified, you need to make sure that, that supplementation of um, of, of personnel, uh, to the extent that you can place it in there is available to help uh, bridge that gap. Now, with regard to being able to uh, also equip what I think is the greatest supplementation for any student's education. Uh, the parents, I think that's also where you talk about communication and outreach and these various things that tend to socialize that function. And, and that's why I think, you know, the, the communication that I've been describing before, in terms of making sure that you get the community together. You know, get people out there, get them, you know, you've heard of math phobias, let's not have a school phobia, let's get people interacting. And I think that uh, kind of thing can really help achievement gap as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Ava?
The idea is that every student can learn and they have great potential. And so we need to, as educators, as a school district, meet the child of where they are at. And lift them up with the skills. And to do that in the classroom, it, to close the achievement gap. Is that we need to look at data-driven instruction. What that looks like is not at the school level or at a district level. We need to break it down to the grade level, looking at each of the grade level, looking at what content. And based on the skills, see what is misleading. Grade our students based on mastery, did they master the skill or content area? And then if we do it that way and we are kind, we build resilience. And we have growth mindset and we teach our kids growth mindset, learning from the mistakes, because that's what life is. We do make mistakes, it's a human thing. And if the children feels comfortable making mistakes and learning from the mistakes, they can succeed. Thanks.
Thank you. Jerry?
The close achievement gaps, first we have to identify where the gaps are. So we have systems in place today, uh, both, uh, teacher observations, but then um, tools like I already, where we have data on how the students are performing. So that's, that's number one. Number two, it's um, we have currently um, Are able to get additional help, either through a small group instruction or if necessary, one-on-one instruction. I think a couple of other strategies for closing the achievement gap, one is around parent education. And so really helping, because if you think about it, parents are really uh, one of the educators, uh, one of the primary educator in some sense. Of the students. And so being able to provide support for the students when they're at home. Uh, another thing that I think uh, is, is around another useful tool, is around learning how to learn. And this is really around a lot of the um, skills that we try to teach um, in our strategic plan about growth mindset, about resilience and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next question is, what criteria should be used to determine school closures? And let's start that with Darcy.
Um, okay, well, that's really simple for me. Uh, in the near-term future, uh, there shouldn't be criteria for determining school closures. You know, my position is this, we shouldn't have been using criteria to talk about school closures in the last couple of years during the pandemic. Um, you know, I've used this phrase, um, but you know, worldwide traumatic experience. And unless, you know, you're in a situation where the lights are turning off the next year. We should not be subjecting our kids and our uh, families and our constituency. Um, when other districts are in similar positions, um, and, and not doing the same thing. So um, with regard to tho- those criteria, I think that you need to look at the budget. You need to look at the projection, you need to be honest about all of the various types of iterations. So in the past, we've looked at the idea of um, the current funding formula, right? Uh, and going, oh, we need more and more people. But in fact, no one looked the other way. No one's said to themselves, okay, with the basic aid, this is what would happen. So we need to have integrity in our evaluative process. Thank you.
Thank you. Ava?
So, uh, there, so we've closed schools, there's lots of reasons why there's been declining birth rates. Um, countywide and currently according to Santa Clara County Office Education, thirty of the thirty-one districts. Have been declining enrollment for the past three to five years. Having a process and ensuring that our community is involved in that process. And having that communication, letting them know what are the facts, what are going on. So that is not a surprise, so that we actually can do something, get the community more involved. And come up with creative solutions. Closing schools should be the very last resort as a teacher. It is the last resort. And if we can't find any other solutions. But we want to try to find other solutions and working with the community with that. And having a process and being clear and having the committee involved and ensuring that this process is clear and doing that. So this is what I think about that.
Thank you. And Jerry?
Right, uh, there is sort of two sets of criteria for me. The first is fiscal. So um, and um, if we just uh, at a point where we can't afford to keep the lights on, and certainly, um, you know, you do what you can only afford to do. But then if it's um, the next level for me is when you close a school, you're basically, um, because the, the number of teachers we employ is really fixed to the, uh, it's a ratio to the students, right? So it's really about the site staff. And that's about a couple of hundred thousand dollars. If you lease out a site, it's maybe another millions. We're looking at a swing of about a one and a half million dollars. So I will want to ask, when we close the school and we get this a million and a half, what exactly are we doing with it? So we can do an appropriate trade-off, right? Because the, uh, so, so that's one. I think the other one for me is about learning effectiveness. If for whatever reason, um, the enrollment of a school gets to the point where it's, um, for me, it's about one class per grade, one kid or class per grade. Um, there's a lot of things that, um, yeah, I think there are good, uh, it's, it starts to impact learning effectiveness. And this is uh, a place when I would start um, thinking about that closure. Thank you.
Thank you. And Satish?
I think um, school closing should be, should be the last one. And the idea is not to close any school or any more schools, right? So it, it's hard to, hard to uh, define a criteria for when you can close the school, right? So the, we should have a mindset, first of all, the school closure is not the, not the objective, okay? That's number one, right? And it's, it's very important that, you know, uh, every child is getting the education and the neighborhood is very, very important. So, you know, they, they will have, you know, we should, when, if I tell you are going to close the school, right? We have to make sure that are, are they getting the, you know, adequate or the same level of education or same level of facility, same level of convenience, everything, whatever they had to you, right? And we should find ways and means to see that if it is economical, if it's a financial part of it, we should see that, is there a better way for us to be, you know, moving around the fund to support the schools? Because we, we should keep always in mind that every child should get the right education and if possible, as close as, you know, close to their home. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we need protocols about student safety? Both personal and privacy issues. And let's start with Ava.
Personal and private issues, I think about technology. It's really important that we keep our students safe, especially. When they're younger, when we have our, our students from K through sixth grade. And then it has to be age-appropriate, because it can change when you go from into middle school from, uh, K through five versus six through eight. Even between the grade levels, there are appropriateness and learning appropriate. Um, and what's uh, appropriate for our students. We need to protect our students from outside information, from people who take advantage of our students. And then we also need to protect our students um, from what's out there coming in, in their increased internet use and communication.
Thank you. Jerry?
Oh, definitely. I think uh, providing a safe learning environment is the most basic, important thing we need to do. Because if students don't feel safe, they cannot be learning. And so there are a couple of aspects here for me. There's sort of a physical aspect that some might be physical bullying. And then um, there's also sort of a cyber, um, sort of cyberbullying kind of things. Definitely think we want to have protocols in place, um, procedures in place to protect the students. But I think even more important, well, perhaps not even more important, but just as important as protocol is education. Um, being able to educate the students on how to um, how to protect themselves, when to reach out for help. Um, those are um, important things we need to do. And then the third is, I think, providing the site leadership. Uh, with the resources and the help that they need um, to protect our students. Thank you.
Uh, Satish?
Yeah, that's very important, right? This is, I think, I think it's, education is second, actually. When I'm sending my kid to the school, I want to make sure that the kid is returning back in the right, right way, right? So whether it's a physical abuse or even the physical safety perspective, we had to, the school facility should be, you know, controlled on that. We had to be making sure that's happening, even a cyber space, actually. Because now every kid has some device, some handhelds or some computer or an iPad and so on. So we have to have a software and the, you know, protection around that. And it's up, we had to, we had to make sure that no intruders are coming in and the site security is implemented on that. And we need to constantly looking into that, our protocols, how it is being done and the procedures. As well as like, you know, every teacher or the, you know, or, or a classroom volunteers, and they are well aware of these things. At the same, and also we should work with the parents and they should be part of us with this. So that jointly we should be in a position to control this a lot. Thank you.
And Darcy?
Marian, can you uh, repeat the question? The last part I didn't quite connect to the, the safety and the.
Do we need protocols about student safety, both personal and privacy?
Okay, do any protocols about student safety for both personal and privacy issues? Okay. All right, let me tell you about the most sobering moment I've had as an elected official in the last eight years. I was attending the Conference of Mayors, the United States Conference of Mayors in Reno in June. And went to a seminar, uh, one of the seminars was about, was about gun safety. Okay, it was about making sure that we're prepared, all right, as a community in the case of a school shooting. And with regard to our most intractable issues, this is why we need to have integrity. This is why we need to have honesty. This is as real as it gets when it comes to school safety and privacy and those issues. Um, it was sobering for me because the advice from the experts is that we must prepare for it. As if it's a natural disaster that will inevitably uh, occur. And, and to me, that was incredibly alarming, because we need to be able to take on these issues uh, fully and, 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 and straight on. So, um, yeah, to, to answer your question, uh, yes, we absolutely need to be concerned and we need to be honest and have integrity about the conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question is around pandemic learning loss. Is it pandemic learning loss has been an issue around the country? As a school board trustee, what would you recommend be done to address this? And let's start with Satish.
Uh, basically, I, I think this is, this is definitely so sad, actually, this has happened, right? This across and even for us as well. So actually, the impact was, you know, it was again, person to person, it was, it is, it's, it, it impacted across. But at the same time, certain kids have more, more issues, certain kids could not get it, certain kids were able to cop up with that much easier, right? So I think this is where, um, you know, the, the district resources of, you know, which can help actually the, from the, you know, by having additional tutors, additional, you know, point of view, help in terms of their academics. Or even social emotional perspective, like, you know, we should be const-, we should be looking into that, you know, how we can support each child. And at least in over a period of time, they are back into how they were, right? So as I exactly said, you know, we need to look into each case and rather than just having a generic approach. We need to have a support structure created and a one-known basis, we should be supporting the kids.
Thank you. And Darcy?
Uh, yeah, we need to be really smart about how we use our resources, um, and we need to be responsive in those moments. Um, you know, with regard to the pandemic, I, I think of a couple of things. Um, uh, you may or may not know, I was the sitting president of the Kipkana Chamber of Commerce when I ran in two thousand fourteen. And so I've kept some pretty good interconnections with the business community, but those connections are only as good as you use them, right? So Silicon Valley Leadership Group with Coloredino at the helm back when he was uh, there, was getting a, a, a lot involved in these various pandemic discussions. I remember a discussion that we had very early on pandemic, and this actually links back to the question of digital divide. My contribution to that, um, you know, conversation with all the various business leaders was, let's make sure that we have access to these various, you know, instruments, instruments and materials for the students. And so if we think about this ahead of time, I think the, the natural answer here is you have to equip your parents with the ability to uh, make up for uh, the gap in their individual students' learning. Because it's just so individualized and it's, it's so, you know, uniquely traumatic to each of the various uh, students and families. Thanks.
Ava?
Have to, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I lost hearing or I lost sound for.
Oh, do you want to hear the question again?
Yes.
Pandemic learning loss has been an issue around the country. As a school board trustee, what would you recommend be done to address this?
Thank you for repeating the question. Um, pandemic learning loss, um, we have to look at student-driven data. And then we also have to look at what can we further support our students to continue. As I mentioned before, when the students come back, they need it a lot more and they still do during the second year. And we also need to support the parents as well and the community. How can we heal the community from
Is getting them um resources to learn a lot of these life skills and then putting them in opportunities where they can interact with their peers. Um, thank you.
Our next question is, one of the areas that school board policy can address. Can be programs to build trust among CUSD stakeholders. How would you enable these programs to build trust? And I'm gonna go back to Jerry.
All right, thank you. Um, so building trust uh again, in my mind, there are really three stages. The first is around communication engagement. Genuine communication and where you listen with empathy. You try to put yourself in the other person's shoes and understand um what the, what the concerns, the needs are. At the same time, communicating information, right? Because a lot of times people. Uh, I I think um we we operate under constraints in the school district here. So that's step one. Step two then in building trust is taking action together. No one's gonna trust someone who only listens and doesn't do anything. And so we really need to think about, after we hear from the community, what are the steps we can take, even tiny little ones? To actually, you know, show some action. And then I think the third part in building trust, after you've taken action, is building a shared vision. Um, you know, big uh sort of having people sort of be united on a direction that we're going. This is how you build everlasting trust by listening, by taking action and having a shared vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Satish.
Communicational engagement, I think I've been insisting on that. That's one of my priority as well. Like, you know, the second priority was engagement. And um, you know, the the community engagement, that's very critical. And how do you engage, having more communication? And, you know, I think uh, it's it's, I think we are not perfect, right? We we have a lot of issues. If there are issues that how, let's share that issues with the people, that people understand that. And I don't think, you know, anybody is going to say that, oh, it has to be perfect. Let me see how I can work with you. So let's have that strong collaboration and partnership with the community and that's a, engage them wherever you can. And and see the both and look from, before making any major decision, look from the both sides. Let's not go, you know, literally one side and make sure that they're also part of this problem-solving team. And that is the only way which we can build that trust. Thank you.
And Darcy.
Uh, I'm gonna give you a bit of a paradox here. If you focus less on the money and you focus more on uh building the trust. The quality of services, the thinking and the delivery of those services, then the money will come. Okay, so you you know, it's it's very similar to the whole idea of, hey, you know, let's make an iPad three hundred dollars, you know, at the beginning of the pandemics to make it more accessible. And, you know, you look what happens with the revenues, you know, and and so this is what we need to do. With regard to rebuilding that trust and uh making sure that we're building quality of services. One thing I did as mayor recently is I had an augmented reality workshop. Uh, had a state-of-the-art instructor uh that's free to the public. Let's get more stuff like that, you know, in our in our school campuses, maybe on a weekend, maybe on the evenings. Uh, I see a lot of advertisements for, you know, you know, kind of for-profit, you know, kind of opportunities. Uh, so to speak, I think we just need to give those opportunities to the public. You know, and and then that public, you know, that has so much money to send their kids to private schools, some of them will respond by supporting the district. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ava.
I believe it's all about building good, positive relationships and that takes time. Building relationships means we as a district probably need to hold events, more school-based events, maybe more district-wide events. Um, the district meets with our parent-teacher associations and parent-teacher uh organizations. Once or twice a year. How about we increase that, you know, on our campuses? How about we have more events at the school levels? And that way, we maintain that relationship and having that engagement so that we can build that trust, because trust does take time. And that we have to show, not just say, we gotta walk the talk. And then at the board meetings, um, if there's anything that comes up that may have some things that. That the may need more clarification, you may ask questions so that we can help explain more. So for those who are listening to the board meetings, it is not something unfamiliar. We wanna make sure we're open. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question. What would you like to have the di- district accomplish over the next four years? Let's start that with Darcy.
Um, okay, uh, the district accomplished over the next four years. Uh, I wanna make sure that our schools, every one of them stays open. I wanna make sure that when we're looking at. Uh, sites uh with perhaps one exception, that we don't sell off our land. Um, because, you know, people talk about, you know, um, declining enrollment. The fact of the matter is, this is cyclical. This is not something that is gonna drop off a precipice and never come back up. I mean, let let's be realistic about this. And and I I say this to people making financial projections as well. You know, if you look at the last uh couple of years, if, you know, the revenues are going down, but over historically, you know, it's it's cyclical. Don't assume that for ten years they're gonna be going down because you can't really make accurate projections, you know, in that kind of uh, you know, context. So. So um, w- with regard to making sure that in the next four years, we have a fantastic uh district. I wanna make sure that we have those connections with uh the community. And uh, you know, provide those services and then we will get that uh support from the community. I think that can be done within four years. Thanks.
Well, how about you, Ava?
In the next four years, um, to make sure that we are. Financially sustainable and that we're looking into the finances so that the next. Uh, four years that the next generation students are gonna be coming in and it's gonna be stable. And to maintain that and also the biggest thing is building that relationship with our community members, the parents, the students. The teachers, the staff members. If we can. Elevate our relationships with each other and having more community events, especially after the pandemic, we need this face-to-face. Uh, having more community events so that we have natural building relationships. And having a stronger community will have, give us a more supportive environment for our students. To be academically, if anything, we will exceed those numbers then from the last two school board meetings of how well we've done.
Thank you. And Jerry?
There are two things I'd like to talk about here, one around student instruction, the other around district governance. In terms of student instruction, what I'm seeing here is that we have a, we have an opportunity here to really. You know, with uh with the sort of the reset from the pandemic, with our change to a basic A funding model, now that we can think, start thinking about how we invest more for the students. I don't think it's just kind of putting back things the way they were, right? And then we have started an exercise before the pandemic. Um, called the Portrait of a CUSD Learner. What do we want our graduates to look like? What are the traits? What do we want them to know? And I think, you know, for me, that's really the second step to the strategic plan. Thinking about uh, you know, sort of starting with the enemy mind and what do we need to do to make that happen? So I like to have that in place in four years. The other one in terms of governance. Is that, you know, during this consolidation discussion, there was a lot of like, well, neighborhood schools versus alternative schools. And what I like to see is for our neighborhood schools to develop identities, to have things that uh that are attractive about them, other than being where they are. A couple with a more liberal enrollment policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And Satish.
Uh, number one is keeping our academic excellence, right? That that is definitely a prime, you know, objective and that should be the focus. Second thing is to, as we, as I've been insisting on, you know, getting a community engagement and building a partner, a strong partnership with community. Uh, third thing from my view is like, you know, having more more choices and more equity within the, you know, in the, in our. Uh, in a student community, like what we can offer them and what is the, you know, the best for each of the chance, right? And another important thing is like the balancing enrollment, that is going to be a big challenge as well, because if it is going to be. Uh, continuously if it is going to be reduced, we need to find out how we can balance that and make sure that every kid is getting the right opportunity there. And um, uh, pretty much, I think, these are the priorities which I'm looking for.
Okay, thank you. Now we come to the last question. Big sigh of relief. We gave this question to the candidates in advance to give them an opportunity to comment on something we did not ask them during this session. And you, we each have ninety seconds for this response. And let's start with um Ava. Would you please state and answer a question you wish you had been asked?
Down to my mouth. So I wish you um asking me my question about. What is, who is my inspiration and why am I running? My inspiration is my grandma, Nai Nai, and she was a teacher too. And how she taught and how she taught me, she was my first teacher. She is someone who really cares about her community, who cared about her community and that's. Who I am. I work hard to care about the students. I've been going to the school board uh meetings. For the past five years and uh. They're the inspiration to keep me going. How I am as a person building relationships. Meeting students where they are, this is how I am going to be as a school board member. Being more of a community member, just in a larger picture uh from the school level on which I am at. So I hope that you will vote for me, the only teacher who is going to be um current teacher candidate. And I hope to bring balance to the board with, as a working teacher. Thank you.
And Jerry?
All right, uh, so my question is, why should voters vote for you? CUSD has been a big part of my life for over a decade, outside my, um, second only to my family and my career. It hasn't always been fun, but I've been very appreciative of doing something important for our community. When I took office four years ago, the conversations around what cuts to make uh to stave off insolvency. Now the conversation can be about what investments to make so we can do more for our students. I wanna help write the next chapter in this CUSD story, because even though we still have challenges ahead, I'm very optimistic about our future. I'll bring to the next board a solid understanding of district operations together with my own personal experience as a CUSD parent. I work well with the board, I work well with the superintendent, and I think I work well with the community. And I help contribute to the strategic plan that we're executing on now. And my actions on the board have been and continue will be very predictable. I'm here to advocate for the students, not special interests. And I make policy based on data, not ideology. And in the same way that we believe in tailoring instruction to fit the needs of the student. I believe in tailoring our schools to meet the neat needs of our community. And so I'm here to ask you for your support so I can continue to serve our students. Thank you.
Satish.
Uh, pretty much the same, same question, like, why should people vote for me, right? So the answer is very simple. I I've been a a dedicated volunteer. You know, and a rich volunteer expedience, which I'm bringing into the board, right? That's seventeen years, as a classroom parent. As a PTA leader, as a board member, as a board president. A lot of leadership experience also I'm bringing in. I professionally, I'm an engineer and engineering leader. I have problems solving skills. I have a, you know, people's skills. I have a way to work with everybody in the board as well as the staff and the community. I like, you know, working with the community and I like working with the district as well. And I'm sure like I can be a great bridge between the community and the district. And uh, you know, my my knowledge, whatever, whatever I gain, I'm sure like I should be able to keep it. I'm so passionate about the students, education, youth, schools, and their well-being. And every action what I have taken in the last four years in the board has been, you know, keeping students first in my mind. And I want to continue doing that and I want to continue with my passion. I request everybody to vote for me. Thank you.
And Darcy.
Thanks very much. The question that I wish that I had been asked is, does integrity provide better results? And my answer is, yes, it does, but it also subjects itself to attacks. And we must take on this medicine. We can take on our most difficult issues this way, whether they be discrimination or lack of funding or lack of infrastructure. If we don't take this on, what we get is obfuscation and resources and benefits that end up getting concentrated in the hands of fewer people. As a result, the system and people in general are worse off. And so please, support disclosure when you can. Support honesty, be honest about your motivations. The pain that you feel might be the corruption leaving your system. Integrity gets you to places like real equity, like the park equity that we are achieving in Cupertino. It brings back events like the Volunteer Fair, the type of events that we need more of in CUSD. We need to support those community groups working to bring people together. What we don't need are canned preset decisions that insult the intelligence of very smart people. Let's talk about the various considerations openly so that we can address these issues effectively. Rather than try to fool people into making decisions because, for instance, people or groups with lots of money wanna make more money. Education is ultimately about integrity. Thank you for the opportunity to help deliver that understanding to cultivate our future and have a greedy.
Thank you. And I would like to thank all of our candidates, both for participating today. And for running for office. Fantastic uh effort. And you deserve a huge round of applause.
Thank you, Marian.
And uh, thank you for the attendees. Thank you for your interest in CUSD. And your uh attention to the fact that our schools are so important. Both to us as parents, grandparents, citizens and our futures.